What we said trying to make it, but take that.
Yeah.
Still want to give on. Dear. Those changes, what if you try it? My voice. Oh, really? There's not going. This can be taken on numbers. By one million. It's been spent before. We don't care. I mean, the way you play time out. It's always on Monday, you think that. They say that they find time to do it.
Ah.
Time of life. But it's. Yeah, I think. But then that. Look down the sword and say, they were doing hard things. They want us to learn. I don't know. So this is the one. Gets me alive in the. Yeah. You don't want a bigger one? Well, she said not a meeting inside, not the, but not the way it's kind of. That says it's out. Do you listen? I'm sorry. He's only got the money. You know, very good.
Wait, what would you?
No.
What? There's.
I'm sorry, but when I think. And I said, you know, we could be in the home of town, where people have this like. Um. Probably not the best there, because they're not on a couple of making a very good. Not the family. And that because he's not. Can I have something that I can teach? You still want to make that work that you do? Well, that's. Do you all go work? Are you serious? Probably look for them. Okay. Yes, we want to follow and see if they can move. If I'll, I'll have some. Not inside, it's the game. You don't need.
I'm not. I was asked.
What you want from me? When you get there.
You're just off. If I was there, I would. Yeah, yeah, no.
Anybody body has a sign. But maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah. I wonder not five. Of course, it's two sides. They're going to have. So you. How it's possible to do that. I. Three days. Not that I'm.
Hello. Uh, not. We then.
So, and so.
There is a. Is it?
Ready.
Oh. It's. Hello. You don't want to.
Ready?
And now.
Uh. This is the point C I P work session for three point five. Documents up in front of you, it shows where we started the year, what we received in interest taxes. Purple way sales, insurance, brands, plan, so. As well as our expenditures that have went out. Um, what's and also what's been estimated that haven't been spent. They spend what we look through. So. After that. We have three point seven million, but you know, right below that, it reflects the C I P reserves, the road years, the E M S. For the end loans we've heard at the city. And the election reserve, so then you take those out of limits for those available for projects, we have two point seven million. The thing to keep in mind with that is. We are not transferring anything in point twenty six, and so. These phones, as well as the interest that we get monthly, and then use some of these other purple way to sales. A bit more in state, the local grant. Uh, will need to sustain us all through point twenty six. So at this point in time, after the third work session, the only item that had left was that heavy D D term work is nice. Equipment replacement for public works. Since then, the, the public works department has come back in. We have been looking at. The S S four A grant match. Placement assessment. Those take match dollars. And so. Those are a couple of new items that Jeremy has brought to the table, and he can give you a little bit more background on that in just a minute. As well as the sheriff's office has that software hardware for the camera system. They can agree for this month and discuss that with the. Uh, Fabi got that we would come back at the, at the work session to determine whether you would do that for. This fourth quarter. So the items that you have in front of you for consideration totaled one hundred and twenty three thousand one eighty six dollars. The legitimate authority for the C I P is three point five million. Um, the thing we keep in mind is capital project funds, long term capital project funds, i.e. five years or more. Are not legally required to be graduated, so that's not. An issue, the only thing you have to look at is that we have the cash available. And then knowing what our future goals are based on. How much money is going in point twenty six? Are there any questions on? The discussion for the news, you have question you want to ask the department heads specifically, or you have a question anywhere?
Well, you, you are ready to vote. And the. With.
Well, that's basically looking at, we have two point seven million available. And the money that's going to go in twenty six is going to be limited. So in looking at our twenty six request, we found a question on. Uh, nine hundred and seventy thousand being requested. And so that's one thing that you would want to look at, and when everything raises. Um. You need to have it in the back of your mind, what your intent was, and expanding the C I P, and how we're going to find these future requests. Because. And so. Then. Finding everything, never saying no to anything, then you have to be willing to increase taxes in order to do that. If you're not willing to increase taxes, then you have to implement. What you want to find, and your mind have to say that too, so that's really about that, that's what it's about.
I thought. I could say twenty six thirty five if. Just. One day. Oh. That's that.
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
Um.
Or we could see the word.
Right. At least the happen one, but the happen one even won't keep me to sustain this as we move forward with, with aggressive. Mm-hmm. And then I have some items from, uh, other departments for the years going on as well, and they're. You know, equipment is not cheap, it's expensive, and so. In order to continue finding all that. We have to be prepared for the tax. Indication. But right now, today. Based on thinking about. The things that we'll need to worry about in the future as far as funding and what's being requested. This is what's in the founding reports away, and I do think it would be good for. Uh, and I know the sheriff, he talked a lot about this, and maybe he don't have as many questions about it because he did, but. Jeremy should explain that thing that management assessment and how that will work. And the specific dollars that we're targeting in that request as well as that S S four A grant match.
It's slightly. To work for you. Um, all the S S or the payment management assessment in towards. Our grant will have embedded technology, still that I brought the four hundred and thirty. Four hundred dollars. That is, uh. Ten forty five percent. Minimum max for that. You know, anything about that, they receive additional consideration, so I have to place the. You know, thirty percent match for thirty six thousand dollars on that. The total grant amount would be one hundred and twenty thousand. As long as you see that need, because that would give. The invoice of the grant, the. For that, if the total time it takes, I'd have one twenty to be thirty six thousand on that. And the S L A board perhaps, you know, we've been presenting some of this before, but that was a total of over two hundred thousand. Um. S S four A, I guess, the total project cost is two hundred thousand, and we got a hundred and sixty thousand in federal. State here is thirty thousand, and then the local part of the. And then on. I think we need the truck, we've been figuring this out most of the year, we're showing us some information on that. Now, this truck is starting to fill a lot of the things we had in the stock product, we're trying to fix it. They can send it there. This particular truck, uh, sort of is a vital piece of equipment up in the housing area, up around Milton. Is why the parking lot, the county office building, and. That would be. We don't believe a small truck on any of the business terms given in the area, so we do need that. A lot. Uh, part of what that. They do, they stayed on front five, the old gas truck down there, as the name of the fence, makes it a little. Uh, taking the bed, we take the bed, we placed a couple of years ago, and it's starting to let out a new traffic. A sound still on the pile for that. So, you know, seventy five, you know, five. You know, I've been sending the equipment down here already, have one that every truck, but out there. For that. Any other further explanation needed?
Well, I would like to expand on where those dollars were, they come from, so. Uh, Jeremy's team that I met and what we were looking at in requesting that payment management and that S S four A grant match. If you look at the bottom of page one of the management report. Um, we have four hundred and fifty eight thousand ninety four dollars in that rate. And so this is directly related. Going for this is so good by to request, it goes so hard to come from.
Yeah, my fault. Now it was.
Originally, it was all the interchange.
Yeah.
And then we moved it, used a whole road reserves, and we were looking at the road outline of the street, we were. And so, since this is. The S S four A is specifically the requirement where we need roads, people like this, but way to that request. And then on the sheriff's camera system. The only other thing that I would like to say on that is, uh, we had that thirty one thousand, but we had requested for the, the whole suite in the crystals. We gave that back because we got grant dollars. So of this one hundred and thirty one thousand dollars, I don't even mind, or this is your department.
So if I can stand that. The hundred and thirty thousand. They were completing. Um. That's what we really get. We probably find it when we get there. Yes, my total request for grant dollars, either anybody, technology, from the, be a hundred and twenty thousand. And then then we'd be starting to fill that thirty six percent match by eighty six thousand. Which. I'm requesting the full amount of one twenty because we have the pay, we're going to get really embarrassed, so we didn't pay through the C I P. Or ultimately, in the new goal, we'd be thirty six thousand to I P. P I P dollars. Or if we got reimbursed for.
You will put it back and move back to the.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. A four twenty three. Only one thousand. That'll change. I mean, forty one five. Then. That's one of the. Forty one five. A three thousand.
Yeah, because he didn't end up using the thirty one thousand, so it's just basically already been put back into the field of dollars.
Well, I would add, based on all. Information we see on that heavy D D. Uh, purpose nice, if they need that, you know, money, plus it's gonna be pretty far down there. But without that, you know, probably under that, so. Now they're like, we'd be in fifty eight, but certainly. Fine.
So you're looking.
We're four forty. Before.
I'm telling you. Give on their control. It's like. And so I think then. And so. And so you say that.
We can barely, my little. Directly. And go reach out to. Um, so. There's a. Yeah. If I have these words, it's not a way for it. So. Ready? Uh, so thank you for making the, the support on the change, it is very difficult, but we are very proud of you. Far and wide, and that we're doing our best to keep the C I P. Then it's moving the path, you know, it's definitely. We are you, so I'm gonna say. Something for us needs to.
I think that is very. On that side, I think, you know, I don't need to raise, and so that's. Which is the opposite as well.
So we are a lot of. We paid a lot of time and. I have to go with you first, thank you.
Alright, thanks for sharing, that's all I have.
We will call on Tony's help on that one last. We're probably.
This is very.
I'm glad you.
Yeah.
It's not possible.
Yeah, really?
The longer they are. That's really.
This is very special, I believe that.
You.
You mean, you know. Yeah, ten hours and six. What is it?
One thing. Um.
Four forty five. Thank you. No, she's coming back, we just saw that one. Yeah, so. It comes from the public land, I thought we had a chance. And so now the duty, the social work. They're J P, really one.
So we bring it all back to the.
What? That's the other. But the, the next one, I mean, nearly a tough. My mom. So this is not much one, and she did work. Yeah, she's had a good one. Yeah, I think you're quite the. Yeah. No, it's only about thousand, okay? Um, six, four, five. It's not a problem, so. You know, I'm getting better.
You know, I mean, I could. So, all right, please.
Please.
Until. Um, please, um, please. Uh, thirty, uh. I think it's a lot. You know, it's, you know, it's like, this, so I'm not expecting, you know, the, 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 the. Uh, but, yeah. I don't like to be the, the, the.
Mm-hmm. So, talk, please, please, we, we can try, I think, it's going to go, like, hmm. And talk, and do. But you do. Yes, it's, um, well, it's pretty good.
Far enough.
What, no.
I didn't read the version myself. I regret that. Do you? Anyway. Let's give us.
Oh, really?
Probably fun. On, on. We will go on with this. You tell me, you know, this.
But I guess that, I mean, it's. It's time, it's a time, for everybody to. Can you tell me something?
We will buy that.
Oh, I'm gonna, do you have anything to say? Yeah, I have a guy, I had a video not long ago, the most. So he came on Friday, and I had to check out the phone, and said, I haven't turned it on yet. And of course, he turned it on, makes it look like there's hope, was there? I, I, I'm. Every story is more a picture, not a picture. Yeah. And I hope I don't get to tell what made it, and it was, but when it looked like it, he didn't get it. But, but we, I would, I really need to. Because they, 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 like, they said that, if you have, if you have a word, you. You really do. Yeah, we have a lot of. Well, people, I love you.
Oh.
Mine's a, I'd like to be there. Now, how did this feel, if you feel that we're all alone, right? Then it's not a bad thing.
You know, half of you can wear it. Um.
Yeah.
That's something, this, this, uh, in on, great.
Oh, thanks, so. We're having a good, we're doing. Hmm. I don't think they, 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 you know, it's my, my, my. Like, yeah. I've been on the phone, you know, for a while, next week, thank. Yeah, but, but, obviously, yeah. If they don't need to see.
Well, that would be a pain either, on, of course.
Mm-hmm.
You're, or you did seem to be.
Um. Yeah, so mostly first, and everybody was in part, but then, but. You got the, so we passed, but, but, uh, to, to be done, so.
You know, a lot of comments, not only, not really, you know.
Well, that's, um.
How long ago?
Up. Oh, no. Oh, uh, it's not, you're the one. I, I don't have any, I don't have any, people, I was, I'm on my way back, so, yeah, things, up, inside. At the time, that, this, here, is gonna start.
Long, it's, it's, uh, well, it's, oh, it's fine.
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
Well, this time, it's four forty five, and I would open the public pen. And wait for sale, property, or, really, not very soon, in, in.
Chairman, we were teased as, uh, on first, um, it doesn't have any, uh, because, uh, they consider, uh, they consider, uh. Three oh nine thirty three, something, they get in, it's like block two, block twelve. Three five and first, getting the, and five of them. This parcel was part of tax sale nineteen C zero, 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 two one five. Um, they did not sell at that tax sale. It was offered to the public again, it sealed, it sealed that sale. Held on three twenty one, twenty twenty two. Um, the top bid received at that sale was twenty five dollars, which was projected, that's mentioned. Um. Uh, eligible for an administrative sale on a K S eighty seven nine point eight oh three B. Uh, notification, the published, uh, importance of the statute. Um, uh, we like, they're coming in. Interested. Uh, five.
If you would, if I, if I, I'm not, I'm, I'm. There's many.
Hi, I'm Peksha Hatley. Um. I had just been out looking at lots for sale out there, came across that one. Had an agent who was trying to sell it to me, and then found out that they could not sell it. So started looking into it, um, but if, um, the lawyer about the lot. And, uh, then spoke to, um, your cell phone, you'd be on the phone about being offered in. So I did that, really, really helping, that you accepted. I went out of my trailer court, I want, on my own piece, I wanna leave my home. To that. And then hopefully, on the eighth, get the lot next to it, so we have one nice, nice big lot. And I give you a gun. So I'm really, really helping. About three, three or five. I believe, I think, go by numbers of fours, and it's very, I'm like, two to five, yeah. But I want three on line, I was like, yeah.
Right, but, yeah, that's all, huh? That'll be all the, uh. I love it.
Yes. They, so like, they have, you know, I'm glad, you know. All that good stuff.
Definitely, we press these, because I've already wondered, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm. So, you have to accept the offer, that. You want, for, you know. Yeah, and, and, you know, after just, they. But it's, you know.
That would be, uh, and they, yeah. After this time, I'll call it the public pen. Which is, 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 is much.
I said, maybe, to accept. They, I believe they did it for, like, they sell the property at three oh nine, they. I'm just starting to get that.
Yeah. I, I would say, um.
I.
Looking great.
Thank you so much.
You know, my ten, uh. So, and you, uh. It's after, uh, I can, uh, you know, yeah. I believe, you, you, what, you tell you, what you're searching. I have the, uh, clearance that. In those places, share, it's gonna be, uh, a thousand dollars, like, a thousand dollars, forty two, showing them, like, twenty two, so that it's a thousand. Oh, I have to pay for it, for you, oh. You, uh, I'm very excited. They, 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 you know. But. Of course, I have. So, that's, it is, it's, I, yeah. You have to, they, he's fine, I've been, uh, again. He's found. Like, oh, so, maybe, I mean, what you want to do, yeah. It's like, I said, I care, oh, but this time, it's fixed now. So I don't, I mean, I guess, maybe, it records, because some of them, right? You know, there's any, yeah. 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 On my laptop, I can speak, I have, so what happens?
For, for us.
You must have, you know, sort of, uh. You, you know, good, you know, Jerry, you know, but, yeah.
Yes.
That's, it's, well.
Maybe I could be, sure, you know, you're saying. You thought, well, yeah.
Well, yeah, well. And, and, yeah, it's, uh, a lot. But, so. I don't think.
Well, it's, it's.
The much, that's, you know.
So, it's, uh.
Now, it's, it's, yeah.
Everyone's probably left here.
I know, you know, it's funny. I do.
Anyway, it's, it's. Facts, you know. Yeah, but, not, not.
Yeah.
It's a world of, um. They're blocking, they're. They look like, uh, to, to, to. But, uh, you, it's, uh.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. No, it's, I, you, then, you, 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 so we just make this, our insurance, and, you know.
That's the, you have something else, yeah?
And then, um, that's, then I did, uh, uh, uh. Oh. And then, uh, uh.